Good evening and welcome to the Southwestern Career Development Center, May Board Meeting. Public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. I'd like a motion.
Make a motion.
Excuse me. The minutes of the RGB meeting, April 24, 2017. It's been motion by Fran and seconded by Leanne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Payroll warrants, number 1036, number 21, 1042, number 24, 1044, and number 25.
Second.
Francis made the move. Ken, excuse me, seconded it. Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Unanimous. Vendor warrants, number 1043 and 1045.
Second.
There's motion by Fran and seconded by Ken. Any discussion? Seeing none, please raise your right hand. You approve? Unanimous. We have also attached to the cash flow and revenue and expenses, committee reports. We had a committee just before this board of the Education, Facilities, and Finance Committee. I believe Ed chaired it. Ed, would you like to talk, speak about it?
Yes, we approved the purchase of a 2016 Grand Caravan. It's used but in good condition for $18,146. And we also approved a bid of $82,000 to complete all the roofing rework and repairs that we need. And we have money in the capital expense budget for both items.
Actually, just to clarify, the van would be coming out of current funds.
Our van is coming out of current funds.
Are you going to apply the revenue from selling the old one towards that one?
Oh, we're not selling, we're not selling any.
I thought I saw one in the newspaper. A 15.
Don't we have to offer our, any equipment we don't use anymore to other technical centers anyway?
Yes, but we're not replacing a bit of van.
We're adding, we're adding to the fleet.
I wonder if you saw in the newspaper perhaps our bid request.
I bet our bid request, I bet, with the 15.
We asked for a 15 or newer.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
I thought I saw something.
You did, Ken, you're right.
And that sums up the committee meeting report from this afternoon unless anybody wants to add anything or ask questions.
Hearing none, we'll move right on to action items which happen to do with the roof bid and the van purchase.
And?
Mister?
One more.
And one more thing, of course, approval of Perkins grant. We'll let Mike take over.
Does the board want to take full action though on the, on the roof bid and the van purchase? I know we did it in committee and almost the whole board was there, but not everybody, so I think that we should do a vote of the full board. The roof, awarding the roof bid to Titan Roofing.
Which you do separate, correct?
Yeah.
It's motion was by John and seconded by Fran. Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous that we accept the roof bid from Titan.
Motion to accept the day Perkins bid.
It has been moved by John to accept the van bid. It's been seconded by Fran.
The van is from DePaul.
DePaul Chevrolet.
DePaul Chevrolet.
It's only got 10,000 miles, scarf axes as clean as it can be. It's 2016. It's almost like new. I won't say I'm the best judge of cars, but that seems like a pretty reasonable price. Hopefully we won't have the maintenance issues.
It's under factory warranty, so.
Right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. And approval Perkins.
Perkins. So, in your Dropbox, in your packets, there is an application overview for our annual federal Perkins allocation. If anyone wants to see the entire grant, we happen to give it to you, it's 47 pages long, but the three main pages are here in the Dropbox which we normally do. This is an entitled, no.
Where is it, Mike, I'm sorry?
Under action items.
Thank you.
This is a grant we receive every year. We do have to apply for it. The allocation amount is determined by a formula the state uses based on our population, our enrollment, demographic data, it's all different. And senators receive anywhere from $40,000 to $350,000, just every, every year. The board has to vote to accept the funds for the Perkins Plan, the Perkins Grant. We normally don't spend the full amount that is awarded to us because, as Stephanie could attest to, the state is less liberal than they used to be on the interpretation of how these federal funds are to be used. And we would rather spend them conservatively than be found to be spending in violation and have to refund the state or reallocate it from our local budget. So, last year, or this current year, we've taken about $30,000 from, out of the Perkins Grant. It's paid for things such as advisor travel, Stephanie says 50 this year, advisor travel for CTSOs, some professional development, some of the industry recognized credentials that our students receive, pays for things like that. This new, this year, our allocation is $176,863. We have written a grant that we believe the state will support that has three projects in it. The first is what's called a consortium budget. It's nothing we have control over. It's for the new teacher prep program through VTC. The state tells us we have to pay them so much money to participate. It's about $17,000 that gets paid out Perkins every year. The other, the next grant, sub-grant, is actually for two positions. One is a academic and technical study coordinator who would integrate academics, particularly math and English into our tech programs. The other is for a, I'll call it directive curriculum. It's the wrong terminology, it's more of a career pathways and post-secondary person to oversee our linkages for dual enrollment and aligning our curriculum to standards. The state feels that that's where they've given us targeted areas that they think we need to improve on in our center. The grant, if the, if the state approves, it will fund those positions for up to five years in the grant. There's no, little's no money out of, out of our budget, our local budget that is, it's all budget money for those positions. Will the state approve the grant as written? Probably not. It will go back for revision a couple of times, but this board has to agree to accept the dollars before it can even submit it to the state for approval. So it's just kind of sitting in a queue, waiting for the board to accept these funds from the state.
Move we accept the funds for the Perkins grant.
It's been moved by Leanne and seconded by Fran. Further discussion?
The state tells us how many dollars we're going to get based on their formula.
Yep, the state uses a formula and that determines how much we're allocated.
And then we create the programs or the, the use of the Perkins grant.
Right, there's guidelines of allowable costs and unallowable costs and they, they want us to tie our Perkins plan, how we spend our money, to the indicators that our center provides, which they happen to be deficient in English and math. That's nothing uncommon, it's across the state. It's just, you know, the state wants us to improve those test scores and for those academics and we see this as a way to get some help in the, in the door, help our students by using federal funding for it. You know, will the positions be around beyond the five years? They may only be a one-year position, I don't know that yet, but that answers your question, Ed.
Thank you, it does. That's how I thought it worked, but I wasn't sure because they keep changing all the rules.
They do your every other day. The application process changes yearly.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Superintendent's report.
I can't come off the hot seat tonight. All right. So, literally it's not.
Yes.
So, my report tonight is going to be a little bit different than, than normal. Usually I report to you what we've done in the last month and bring you up to date on activities at the center. But both at the town and at the annual floor meeting and as well as at our reorganization meeting in March, you had asked for some information, people had asked for the information about the populations we serve, including special populations and what type of non-trad traditional students. You had asked for that. I was able to pull some reports that didn't identify any students, it just identifies programs and what those categories are, so I wanted to share that with you tonight and try to answer any questions that you may have. I did the very high-tech version, it's highlighted here for you, one to take one past the head and one for everybody. It is in your Dropbox as well, but in case you are a paper person, I have this here in front of you and I'll break it down for you. So this data that's collected, this is what's reported to the state of Vermont through a database that they provide to us. This is just one of many indicators that we have to report to the agency of education, which drives our Perkins funding, et cetera, et cetera. If you look across the top, you'll see several categories. First being, we start from top left to top right to walk you through this. They refer to us as Southwest, that's what we're referred to as the state or FSW, the local program name. So for example, forestry and heavy equipment SIP code, that is what the state classifies the program code is for. It's just, I forget exactly what it stands for, but there are different SIP codes, there could be a different SIP code for forestry and heavy equipment in a different center that has a different spin on or different flair. We have total, total enrollment is the next category, then male, female, non-traditional, minority, economically disadvantaged, limited English, migrant, individualized education plan, single parent, displaced homemaker, 504, not public high school, no diploma, and adults with diploma. Those are not categories that we make up, they're categories the state asks us to report on. And the ones that I've highlighted here for you tonight are non-traditional enrollment, IEPs and 504s. Those are what people had asked for. So if we start with the green column, non-traditional, some programs are still considered, they're primarily male dominant or female dominant, with other programs being determined as gender neutral. And those are ever-changing, so I'll give you an example. Culinary is gender neutral. Medical professions used to be female oriented, now it's gender neutral. Cosmetology is still considered female oriented, those kind of give you some examples. So if you look at non-traditional enrollment, I don't have to go through every line here, you can see programs, so for example, culinary arts has a lot of non-traditional students enrolled in it. The perfect example would be forestry and heavy equipment. That is, that is a male dominant field according to the state. There is one female in that. Cosmetology would be the converse of that, there's one, one male if you would, in cosmetology versus the remaining females. So you can see the breakdown there between female, male, and what's considered non-traditional as of 2017.
So go to forensics and business law.
Sure.
Non-traditional 42.
Right.
So would that be 42, which is gender?
So if you come to the female, if you look in the column two rows earlier, so 42 females enrolled in the classes, and it's showing 42 non-traditional, so that's non-traditional enrollment for PTF 12, which is forensics and business law. Those PTFs, we call them our short blocks, our intro classes, the state calls them pre-tech foundation classes. Whatever terminology you want to use, they're all the same thing, it's just what we call them locally. So you'll see the numbers in the PTFs, they're much higher because those are our interest block classes. If you go across to IVEP, it's old terminology, it should be IEP, but the state still uses individualized vocational education plan. It's not current language. You can see by program, the number of students that are on an individualized education plan are in IEP. And that could be for very simple reasons, and it could be they simply need a test read to them, they need to strive. A lot of IEPs are just good first instruction, doesn't mean that they're really deficit in any particular category. The 504s, two categories over, those are also students on different types of combinations in our programs. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, but I wanted to show this to you as a representative of these folks that asked. So we're looking at a total enrollment of 542 students. And that is not unique students, by the way. That is the number of students that are enrolled in classes. So, a student could be counted twice in that number because they could be taking an intro class and a full class, or they could be taking two programs, or they could be in work-based learning in a program. So, please don't look at that number and say, you told us we had 300 and something this semester, you know? That's actual kids in seats, this is number of students enrolled in a program, it's just a little bit different.
This one that's called single parent, does that mean is the kid a single parent or do they have a single parent?
It means the student would be, would be a single parent. So you see, we are serving 85 students in a non-traditional role, 85 on IEPs and another 43 across the school on 504s and accommodations. So 130 so students out of the 542 we're serving with, they have some kind of accommodations for their technical program or their, or their intro class. So with that math, almost 25% of our students, or, I mean, I'm dividing 85 plus 43, it should not be divided by 542, it should be divided by.
More like 350.
350. I don't have it reported in front of me. Of actual students? Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how many of our students are on an IEP or 504, so I'm just trying to figure out what so.
28.
At least a quarter, probably.
128.
At least a quarter of 128.
Yeah. And Meg?
Probably accurate.
It's fairly, it's fairly relationate also to the population from our sending schools percentage-wise. I don't have for you the special ed population, I'm not Anthony, but it's very similar, it's proportional to the students that we're, that we're serving, including all those Marler districts. That's almost a third.
Yeah, I think I may use close to 20%. And they're our largest.
Yeah.
The, the whole population is over 20% now. It's more like 22% including the grade schools, and that's why the question was asked. And they wanted to know, not how many, they wanted to know how many are being so-called graduated out, you know? But it's been my experience that you don't graduate out, you keep that tag for the rest of your school days.
Yeah, I, you know, we don't, I don't have, I can't drill down deep enough to see students that had accommodations or that then graduated, I can't track that, that granularly in our system. It's, this is, this is the detail as I, as I can get with the state reports that we have to give you kind of a percentage or calculate the percentage.
For instance, the 504s, many of them are asthma related, you know, the asthma doesn't go away, so you can't kind of graduate out of those programs. And, and some of them are ADHD and ADD, and you don't seem to graduate out of those either. So those are the 504s, those are medically related. The other ones, you should be able to. If you receive enough accommodations, you should be able to excel. So are you asking, Jackie, how many students transition off of an IEP? I wasn't asking it, it was asked at the town meeting. Yeah, it was asked, okay. And it was 382, 382 for this year, as students count.
Thank you, Stu.
Because I think most students would transition during elementary years. No, actually, some of them, some of them gain, well, some transfer in, some students transfer in, correct? And you also have in this, in this number, people from receiving schools too. So it's not just here.
Right. I think the, I think the, one of the important things is that when people hear that a student's on an IEP, I think sometimes people jump to conclusions about what that means, just by the very nature of it, or a 504. You know, these accommodations range from, again, good first instruction and to support, into support roles. Some of our students have one-on-ones that come with them. Not, not many, but some do, so this is, these are a range of accommodations that our, that our students have. There's no, you know, one, one model that, that fits all, you know? It is, we serve a diverse population, and this, I think we're representative of the regions which we serve. So, I hope that this information is sort of what we're looking for, I'm going to give you a snapshot, at least currently, I can go back 10 years in this data, it's very similar, it doesn't change much as far as the percentage goes of, of students that we're serving on IEPs and 504s.
Well, anyways, I think it was unfair to ask the CDC since the people who, who do the IEPs are, are in the main high schools, so.
Sending schools.
Sending schools. So you're just the recipient and you're just an instructing base, a place that, that deals with their IEPs, but they're not the, the people who.
Right, we're not the LEA.
Right.
And we are not responsible for directly servicing the IEP, that is the responsibility of the sending, the sending districts. We are, we are there in a supportive role, and our special needs coordinator works with instructors to provide accommodations so students can, you know, have good first instruction. And sometimes that, you know, a descending district does send a one-on-one support person with, with them. That is the LEA's responsibility to do.
But in, in terms of tracking, you know, unlike another school in our districts, we really couldn't track that information because we're not the, the holder of all the information and, and we don't contract the IEP. We just follow it.
Right.
I think that's what I said at the, at the annual meeting, actually, that it was the sending schools' responsibility that we get served, kids who are on IEPs.
Right, and we attend, we attend the transition meetings, we attend accommodation meetings, I mean, that's what we're, we don't certainly ignore, we're part of the process, but the students are identified through their main sending schools, whether they qualify or not or an IEP or a combination, not us. We don't pick and choose.
I don't think the individual that may answer, asked the question understood the relationship between the CDC and all the sending schools.
Do we get students here who are on IEP or 504 that we can't service? It's just that the need is too great, has that happened? They want to, or are the sending schools pretty good about understanding who can do what?
I think they're pretty good as to what skills a student would need. You know, I think the, the one time where, you know, it could be a real issue would, would be around safety.
Right.
But I think the school counselors are pretty well-versed as to what the math level needs to be, what the English level needs to be for the student to be successful.
Yeah, and the, this isn't really off-topic, it's, we're actually really on topic. The admissions process is, has, is, it's a blind process to, to our teachers. So, to walk you through a student, any student who wants to apply for a program, not one of our intro classes, a program, applies for the program. The counselor helps determine if they meet the, the criteria for admission, they meet with our instructors, they have an interview, it's not an interview, it's more of a conversation to see if the student, why do they want to take the program, you know, is it going to be a good fit? Maybe perhaps they're interviewing for pre-law and maybe law enforcement's a better fit, or they're interviewing for med professions and they really think they'd be better at something else, you know? It's to gauge the interest of the student and see if they're, are a good fit. Teachers do look at disciplinary records, attendance records, you know, student's background, and to see if they're appropriate or not for the program. And they're not allowed to see students on IEP or 504 as part of that process. Once a student is accepted into the program, then teachers are made aware of accommodations, and that's when meetings take place and potential transition meetings, can we accommodate the student? Is it reasonable, is it appropriate accommodations to be successful in a program? And that's when all that starts. So it is a blind process as it should be. I think it's very, it's very fair, and to answer your question directly, Rob, very few students get turned away, except what like Meg said, clear safety issues, they might redirect that student to another program, or just determine it's not appropriate for them to be, you know, in culinary, for example, or in forestry. And the counselors and the case managers, I think they really respect that and understand that, they have a good relationship with them.
Are our instructors informed of the accommodations needed at the beginning of the semester?
Actually, by law, they have to have it before school starts, before students are in the classroom, and that's the job of our special needs coordinator to gather that data from the sending schools and provide it to the teachers before, oh, before school starts, before the semester changes for new incoming students. And it's really, it's not the full IEP, it's what the accommodations are, and if they have more questions, need more help, the special needs coordinator will work with them to determine what, what's appropriate or not.
Outside of the special needs students, if an instructor were to turn a student away, are they trusted, is their knowledge trusted, or does the administration challenge them?
Um, so I'm not exactly sure your question. Good reading.
Are all students, all students, you just, you just described the process for all students, not just those with IEPs or 504s?
For all students. Okay. And I think you had another question there, do, do we, is the instructor's decision final?
Yes.
Um, that's a case-by-case basis. If there are clear reasons why a student, or it appears a student's not going to be successful in a program, then we'll absolutely support the instructor in that, you know, not every student is blindly and blankly accepted into programs. You know, sometimes there's very valid reasons that an instructor feels that a student isn't going to be appropriate. But it's, it's a give and take where a high school, a counselor may feel very appropriate for a student to be in their program, and they don't understand why. You know, why can't, you know, John be in the, in this class? And sometimes it's back and forth and give and take, so I can't give a hard and fast answer that, you know, every single time a teacher says, no, I don't think it's appropriate, that that student may not be in the class. But it's also not, just because you said no, we're going to tell you how to take, I mean, it's somewhere in between that. Because what we want is for the student to be successful in the program. And if they, for example, have a second grade math level and the content in the program is at least an A to ninth grade math level, it's going to be very difficult for that student to be successful. And we don't want to see students struggle and not be able to provide the full support that they need. A lot of times what happens is students apply to a program in 10th grade and they're not even eligible for it to 11th grade, but we can take 10th graders. So oftentimes, a 10th grader's not ready for a program. And, you know, one of the things that we'll say to students and counselors is, wait till next year, you know, one more year, you know, work on math, work on English, work on whatever the deficiency is, and you can reapply next year. And if next year isn't enough, you can reapply in your senior year. So it's not a one-shot deal. I mean, I think that's something to take away from it, is that you always have another chance to apply for a program or take, or take one of the intro classes which have no, which have no requirements, if you will, for admissions, that if a student wants to take, for example, intro to culinary, we're going to take intro culinary. Hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Yeah, one more question since this is now public. I see one class, one course here where there's only two students.
Correct, marketing? Yeah, it's because the program doesn't exist anymore, it's being, it's phased out and this is, this is reporting. As you, for those four members that have been around for a little bit, we took the marketing program and decided that it was no longer a viable program as it stood, and we took the accounting and finance and business programs and the campus store became the lab for those two programs, and we had to phase out the marketing, and those are the two remaining students that were in year two. That's what those are.
Okay, so we're allowing them to complete their two-year program.
Absolutely. We committed, they committed to us, we committed to them as well. So next year that would be zero, because there won't be any money. That's what I thought, but. It's a good question, Ed. Anything else I can answer for you out of this report?
Thank you.
Meg?
Just wanted to update you on the MAU CDC Joint PLP Committee. I know it's a lot of acronyms, but the PLP Committee is the Personalized Learning Plan Committee. We've been meeting monthly with Laura Boudreau's facilitation, and this last week, we had the opportunity to go up to the middle school to meet with some students to see what their PLPs look like.
PLPs look like. And it was great. I mean, the students, I met with three students. They shared their plans. They were all unique. They all seemed realistic and seemed to be taking them pretty serious. So while I was in the classroom, I heard at least three times the adults say, oh, well, at the CDC, oh, well, at the CDC. So I'm glad, glad to know that folks up there are thinking of us. Next year, the eighth-grade students that come to the high school come with their Chromebooks, and on the Chromebook is their PLP. So hopefully, we'll be actively engaged in adding to their PLP plans. But what impressed me was the self-evaluation that students are doing around, what are my interests? What are my skills? What are my attributes? You know, what am I strong at? You know, I think sometimes kids come into high school and you don't really know that. And I think it's important to differentiate between interest versus strength or skills. You know, because I could easily say, I want to be a doctor, but if I don't want to go to college, that's an issue. But, so I think, I think they'll come here with a good sense of direction, as well as areas of interest that they want to, want to explore. Another part of the PLP plan also includes students recording what their, what their report cards say. You know, and I think that's important for kids, too, to, you know, to have to record their own grade. I mean, they don't record it in the school system, but on their PLP. You know, they're looking at that number and they're, you know, they're actually seeing it, whereas a report card might be easily put aside. So, you know, they're working with that, that data. They're working with their reading and writing scores. And then at the end, at the end of each goal that they set, there's also a date of review and revision. So they have to review each goal that they set with them, for themselves, and review it every so often. They also have, at the end, the seventh grade students came into the eighth grade PLP that I was, I was in, and they, they were there to interview the eighth graders so that they could see how the eighth graders were completing their PLP plans, so that would help give them some ideas and guidance. It was just, it was really, it was interesting. It was a well-oiled machine, and I think, you know, I think it's important for us to be at the table and actively participating in, in the joint committee. And, you know, it was just nice to hear people mention us, so.
So they're aware of our offerings and what was required to become a student in the CDC before they even leave the eighth grade?
Yes. And, and the eighth grade students have already gone through a tour here.
Yeah.
But it was the adults that were saying it to the students. I mean, students were saying it, but I think, you know, students came here and they did a tour and, you know, they, but the adults, you know, I'm not sure how many of them have physically been in, in our building. So if they're thinking it, and it's being reinforced by, by teachers, I think all around, that's, that's good for us.
So just a little background quickly. Flexible Pathways was adopted in 2013, known as Act 77. And it's interesting, tech centers are, are well-paid ways to serve as part of the Flexible Pathways to graduation, where high schools, middle schools, elementary schools have had to adapt a little bit for that. I'm not going to read all this to you, but quickly, some of the things that Flexible Pathways provide for are expansion of the existing dual enrollment program for college credit, expansion of early college programs, increased access to workplace learning, increased virtual embedded learning opportunities for online, increased access to CTE, and implementation of the actual personal learning plan. So those sound like a lot of things that we already do. So we're not, we're not reinventing the wheel. We're being at the table, as Meg said. And I would like to thank Meg and Wendy Klein and Tom Pasternak for being part of the standing committee with the, with the SVSU and MAU, and working on those plans so that students have the best access to our, to our tech programs as they come through the ninth or 12th grade.
We're also trying to come up with a common PLP form to use between the high school and the CDC. And Arlington Memorial High School has also agreed to use the same one that, you know, MAU and the CDC will, will be using as well. So, you know, so most of our students that come to us will have similar PLP forms, which is helpful.
Be helped, very helpful.
Are we doing any work with Bern Burton?
Not yet. I think, you know, I think it's a good sign that Arlington wants to be a part of, of it. BBA was, was asked to do some professional development with us. BBA, Arlington, Housick Falls, and MAU were all asked to participate in professional development. They, BBA was not, and Arlington were not able to send anyone to those trainings, but they know that it's something that we're interested in working on with them.
Thank you. That's the end of my report, or our report, I should say.
There is no chairman's report?
I just, in reading all the information about the Montpelier with the teacher's health plan, and then this new alternative plan where they want schools to cut $13 million, does that affect the CDC at all?
Yes. If the proposal, if the ASH amendment stands, we'll get to see if that will or not. We, the three independent technical centers are considered supervisory unions for that, for that purpose, because we provide health insurance. And if, again, if that legislation stands, I'm not sure that it will, but we'll see. The CDC will be responsible for about $21,000 to the state, far less than other districts, summing in the tune of $300,000 and $400,000. We are not going to be in that, in that boat, but we are about $21,000 as the other two.
$20,769.
Pretty close. I like to use round numbers. So we'll see. You know, but we certainly don't need to take any action tonight on anything for, for that. That's why there's, it wasn't on the agenda. Thank you for asking.
Any other comments? I need a motion to go on executive session.
So who?
Second. Motion by Fran, second by John. All favor, raise your right hand, please. I assume you're heading for...